Convening our meeting, thank you for being here tonight. This evening, the Presentation of Colors will be led by the Dobson High JROTC. Presenting members tonight are Javier Castillo, Vanessa Land, Mario Gonzalez, and Abby Hurst, led by Lieutenant Colonel Anthony Kuzek, Senior Master Sergeant Stephen Koch. The Pledge Allegiance will be led by Sofia Gonzalez. And the National Anthem is recorded and performed by O'Connor Elementary, directed by Stephen White. Please stand if you are able for the Presentation of Colors, Pledge, and National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed, and the twilight's last gleaming, whose stars bright and bright stars, through the perilous fight? All the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets' red glare, the hosters singing air, they proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say the stars spangled, then, O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, he may be seated. We will begin tonight's meeting with a video on Governing Board Procedures.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected Governing Board members served without compensation and volunteered countless hours. The President and the Clerk of the Board are elected in January. Under state law, the Governing Board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that the Board discusses or requires the Board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action or discussion item, please complete a request to address the Board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak once recognized by the Governing Board President. Please state your name before you speak. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the Governing Board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the Board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the Board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the Board at least five working days before that meeting. The Superintendent or Governing Board President will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting.
This is an official Governing Board meeting. The Board has important business to conduct that is essential to the operation of the district. Everyone is welcome to express ideas or concerns to the Board in accordance with the agenda. The poster in the boardroom describes positive behaviors expected and behaviors that cannot be tolerated. Please speak and act respectfully and actively listen. Be kind, verbal harassment, abusive or foul language, intimidation, and disruption have no place in a classroom or the boardroom. Please know aside conversations or reactive comments, they can be disruptive. It is the Governing Board President's responsibility to maintain proper order so the Board can conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. If you are disruptive or interfere with the conduct of this meeting, you will be asked to leave so the Board can conduct the business of the district. I just wanted to make a side note. Mrs. Walden is out of town and joining us virtually, so we do have her here virtually with us. So, thank you all for being here tonight. And we are going to continue with our meeting and go on to our Board calendar. Dr. Forless, can you review the calendar with us?
Thank you very much, Madam President. As we take a look at our calendar, we have... I know that a spring break is on many minds, so I will be happy to share a bit about that. On March 10th through the 14th, our schools will be closed and we will have limited district services, and that is the week of March 10th to the 14th. On March 25th is our next Governing Board meeting, that is at 6:30. So, in the month of March, we only have one Governing Board meeting. On the 31st of March at 6:00 PM is the East Valley School Board Consortium meeting. Evette is our host that evening, so I'm hopeful that you will RSVP and let Cameo know if you're able to attend so that we can make sure that Mesa Public Schools is well represented. And then on April 8th at 5 o'clock, we will have a study session. We will be hearing from our junior high students who were engaged in a Activate session talking about cell phones. So, Mrs. Hutchinson and I had an opportunity to get to know these young people, and boy, do they have a lot to share with us. And then we will follow with a 6:30 PM Governing Board meeting. I also want to thank all of you for being here this evening at 5 o'clock. Our meeting started at 5 instead of at 6:30 because it is our hope that our meeting will be swift so that we can get to the Citizen of the Year celebration that is honoring our former Board President, Mrs. Jenny Richardson. So again, thank you very much for those of you who made the accommodation to be here at 5 o'clock start time instead of 6:30. And that concludes the calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. Will you go ahead and share your Superintendent's update with us at this time?
Are we ready, Chad? Here we go. We know that we have a promise that anchors us in the work that we do in Mesa Public Schools, to know every student by name, serve them by strength and need so that they graduate ready for college, career, and community. And to put that promise into action, we have some stepping stones to meet that promise. It begins at the very bottom with our Governing Board goals, focused on increasing proficiency and growth in English Language Arts and Mathematics, increasing our graduation rate, and expanding our College and Career Readiness Index points as well as service learning, taking a look at that well-rounded student when they cross the finish line of graduation. We know that we have a Graduation Plus model that is focused on ensuring our children are ready for college as well as the world of work. And that looks like industry certifications, work-based learning, earn college credit, advanced diploma designations, as well as a College and Career Action Plan. We know how important post-secondary education is and making sure that all of our kids are college-ready are directly aligned to our Governing Board goals. We know that we have a portrait of a graduate that focuses on the attitudes and skills that our community believes is most important when our kids cross that finish line of graduation. We have three areas of focus this year that Superintendent C. and I dug through lots of data last year and said these are our big areas that we need to focus on. And that versus academic and instructional development, community engagement and safety, as well as organizational and operational efficiencies. So we're going to start off with a celebration of some academic and instructional development. Our Mountain View Toros recently earned an impressive fourth-place finish at the We the People State Competition last month under the guidance of social studies teacher, Mr. Steven Minor. This achievement underscores the valuable impact We the People plays in deepening students' understanding of democratic principles as well as their role as engaged citizens. Moving on, we know that February is Career and Technical Education Month. In Mesa Public Schools, students in career and technical education programs take what they learn and apply it in real-world projects like building robots or extracting DNA. We prepare students with the technical skills needed in today's workforce and the employability skills that make them valuable employees. We also know that many of our career technical education students wrap around all of their knowledge as they pursue their passions for college education. An inspiring leadership, taking an opportunity to give a shout-out to Franklin Accelerated Academy at the Jordan Campus who celebrated President's Day with an inspiring, student-led assembly. The Firebird Choir opened the event with a beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. Students recited poetry, presented famous American reports on former presidents. Student council members delivered powerful messages encouraging their peers to lead like George Washington, innovate like Thomas Jefferson, speak like Abraham Lincoln, and inspire like Franklin D. Roosevelt. The assembly was a wonderful demonstration of student leadership and patriotism. As we celebrate National Public Schools Week, it is the week of February 24th to the 28th. We take a moment to recognize and honor the outstanding contributions of our dedicated teachers, staff, administrators, students, and families across our district. This week provides an opportunity to reflect on the essential role that public education plays in creating opportunities for every child and fostering a brighter future for our community. Earlier this month, our Communications and Engagement Team and I attended the Arizona School Public Relations Association Awards Ceremony. Our team earned many honors for marketing, social media, writing, film, and photography. We were joined by the Mesa Police Department and its Community Relations Division, which received the Outstanding Partner in Education Award from ASPRA for its commitment to student success through the Spark Youth Sports Program and their partnership with us here in Mesa Public Schools. And speaking of Spark, Keller and Lindberg Elementarys competed last week at Mesa High. They had an amazing soccer game where the game went back and forth until Keller came through victorious on penalty kicks. It was great to see Mesa PD and the families of both schools with full support of their students. I think we had a couple Governing Board members stop by as well. You can also see the friendly competition between Keller Principal Crystal Arbogast and Lindberg Principal Eric Hedrick repping each other's schools. True collaboration. Spark is one of the many wonderful ways that we partner with Mesa Police Department. I am continually grateful for our very, very, very strong partnership with them. During Engineers Week, Crisman Elementary partnered with the City of Mesa Engineering Department to design and build popsicle-stick bridges. When I got this information, I'm going to tell you, I had to read it three times to make sure I had it correct. Team Matrix won the structure that held 420 pounds with popsicle sticks. And mark your calendars for tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:30. As we celebrate Public Schools Week, I want to remind everybody that Mesa Public Schools' first-ever School Choice Fair is happening tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30 at Mountain View High School. This is a great opportunity for families to find out what's inside the many public education options available within our district. And on February 10th, Governor Hobbs declared March Arizona Procurement Month to bring recognition to the significant role that procurement plays in the effectiveness of business and government. We celebrate the efforts of Michelle Hamilton and her team of professionals who combined experience spans over 250 years. Their efforts ensure we uphold our responsibility as good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And you will see that we have some special days in the month ahead. National Women's History Month, Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and then some very special days. And some weeks, National Foreign Language Week, National School Social Work Week, National School Breakfast Week, National Pie Day, and that's just with a P and an I because that's 3.14. And again, March 10th to the 14th is spring break. And with that, I conclude my update to our Governing Board. Always lots to share about what's happening in Mesa Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. So many things happening. We appreciate you updating us on what's going on. And I see lots of familiar faces out in our crowd tonight from a certain school that we're excited to see spotlighted, Zaharis. And so, Dr. Forless, will you share more about our school spotlight?
I can't wait. Please join me at the adias because I know that you're going to want to do some handshakes with these special people. I thought, get on with this. Our Spotlight Recognitions Program is designed to provide our community with an inside look at the exceptional individuals within Mesa Public Schools. At every meeting, we celebrate remarkable students and staff members who positively impact our schools, inviting everyone to find out what's inside and honor their contributions. The school spotlights will feature a video showcasing each school tonight at Zaharis Elementary, recognition of a distinguished student, a certified staff member, and a classified staff member. So we're going to get on with the celebration for Zaharis Elementary. So will Jen Coons, Principal at Zaharis Elementary, please join me at the podium where we watch a very special video about your school. Come on up.
At Zaharis, we are taught skills and strategies to inquiry, the workshop model, and direct instruction to help us to become better readers, writers, mathematicians, and social scientists. Our teachers provide opportunities to make our learning meaningful and authentic.
Inquiry-based learning is an approach that emphasizes the student's role in the learning process. With the help of our teachers, we have voice and choice in showing how we demonstrate our learning.
In math, we solve problems in groups and independently. Our teachers provide us with real-life work problems, and we enjoy sharing our strategies and solutions.
Welcome to the ZBC.
The Zaharis Broadcast Channel is a student-run daily news show. Fifth and sixth-grade students write scripts for news, sports, weather, and what's happening around Zaharis, and perform them live each morning. Students behind the scenes learn how to use cameras, teleprompters, and editing software.
Collaborative classrooms bring together two or more teachers with students to create unique learning experiences. This allows teachers to meet instructional needs of each student and provide opportunities for choices and learning.
The Zaharis Makerspace is open for all Zaharis students. We explore many types of materials such as stop-motion videos, Ozabots, marble runs, cardboard construction, and much more. In Makerspace, we learn to be risk-takers, persevere, and make choices. These traits help us become scholars.
I know that Mrs. Coons is ready to introduce us to our spotlight staff and students.
Thank you, good evening. Can I have Heather Bullard come up? Join me up here? Hey, maybe move that way just a little bit so I can't see you. Heather and I have worked together for over 20 years, over 20 years, so. Tonight, I'm so excited to celebrate Heather Bullard. It is with great admiration and gratitude that we recognize her tonight. Heather is not only a master teacher with 28 years of experience, but also a beacon of dedication, passion, and waiving commitment to her students and colleagues. Heather is more than an educator. She is a mentor, an inspiration, and a guiding force who shapes the future of every student she encounters at Zaharis. Her deep understanding of inquiry and innovation makes learning engaging and meaningful, igniting curiosity and a love for learning for her students. Her passion and empathy are unmatched. She sees the unique strengths and needs of her students and adapts her teaching styles to ensure that they have every opportunity to succeed. She instills confidence, resilience, and a lifelong passion for learning, leaving an imprint on her students that lasts far beyond the classroom. Heather's dedication extends well beyond her role as a teacher. She is a pillar of support for our school community, always willing to go the extra mile to assist students, colleagues, and families. Whether serving on committees, leading professional development, or collaborating with her teammates to increase student achievement, Heather's leadership and professionalism shines through. Her contribution as a respected member of the leadership team makes her an invaluable asset to our school. We are honored to celebrate her dedication, her passion, and her incredible impact she continues to make in the lives of students and our school community. Congratulations.
Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing someone who truly makes a difference every single day at Zaharis, Ms. Susan Knott. Will you please come up?
Susan has been a classified member for the past 20 years and has dedicated her time and energy to supporting our school community. Over the years, she has held many roles on her campus, but her most important role has been her ability to work alongside our teachers and their students every single day as an instructional assistant. Whether working in the hallway helping a student with their math facts or sitting knee-to-knee alongside a beginning reader, Susan works tirelessly to support student learning. She is also never without a smile on her face and a happy greeting. Beyond her direct work with students, Susan plays an essential role in keeping our school organized and running efficiently. No task is too big or too small. She is always willing to lend a helping hand, stepping in whenever needed. Her dedication, reliability, and selfless service has left a lasting mark on our Zaharis community. Our school is truly a better place because of you, Susan. Her years of hard work, compassion, and commitment have not gone unnoticed, and we are incredibly grateful for all that you have done.
All right, I am so excited and thrilled to honor Parker Adams. Parker is a student who's made a lasting impression on both his classroom and the Zaharis school community. Parker is a force to be reckoned with, demonstrating determination, passion, and excellence in everything he does. His hard work and attention to detail sets him apart, and his enthusiasm for learning is truly inspiring. According to his teacher, Ms. Clem, one of Parker's greatest qualities is his steadfast dedication. He approaches every task with focus and perseverance. But beyond his academic excellence, Parker is also a remarkable friend and role model. His classmates describe him as someone who sets the example, encourages others, and always lends a helping hand. His leadership shines through in the ways he supports those around him, guiding his peers in the right direction, ensuring that no one is left behind. Parker's kindness, integrity, and commitment to excellence makes him an invaluable part of our school community. We are incredibly proud of his accomplishments and the positive impacts he has had on those around him. Congratulations. We know it takes a village to support our school. So if you are here to celebrate Zaharis, will you please stand so we can recognize you as well? That concludes our recognitions this evening. So if the Zaharis folks, and those of you that are here to celebrate, if you would like to continue outside this room, we will get on with our work.
Congratulations, Zaharis. We're grateful for all they do. We are now at the time in the meeting for public comment and call to the public. We'll first watch a short video on the procedures.
The governing board welcomes comments from the public on non-agenda items during the call to the public. Please remember, as a general rule, public comments will be limited to three minutes, and the duration of an open call to the public will be 15 minutes. The president may set specific time limits for speakers and the duration of the call to the public to maximize the opportunity for individuals to offer their viewpoints. Comments must pertain to a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the governing board. This is not an appropriate forum to complain about an employee, student, or others. Please use the procedures established in Policy 1-302 for this purpose. State law prohibits board members from commenting on or discussing the matters presented at the end of the call to the public. The board may ask the superintendent to review the issue or place it on a future agenda. A board member may also briefly respond to criticism of a board member or the governing board. Thank you for allowing this meeting to be conducted in a peaceful and productive manner.
Mrs. Chaffee, how many speakers do we have signed up tonight?
We have five speakers signed up to speak tonight.
Okay, since we have five speakers, each person will have three minutes to speak. Ms. Chaffee, I'd like to thank you for serving as the clerk, and I'd like you to lead us through this agenda item, please.
Thank you so much, Madam President. We have five speakers tonight. I will call up the first three. When you come up to the podium, please share your first and last name. First, we have Ed Steele, then Casey Baxter, and Jeff Thompson. They will be followed by Bernard Arthur and Chris Hamlet.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendency. My name is Ed Steele. One of the prime responsibilities of leadership in any organization, including this district, is to identify problems as well as issues that are having negative effects on the district, and then to work diligently to solve those problems or reduce the negative effect of those issues. I've heard a lot lately about how the low birth rate in our community is negatively affecting this district. So my question to you is, this leadership, if there were something you could do to help increase the birth rate in this community, would you have the courage to do it? So let me offer you a couple of examples. This leadership continues to allow teachers and staff to promote, encourage, and celebrate the most barren and fruitless lifestyles. And I'm talking about the LGBTQ lifestyle. It's barren and fruitless. And you allow that to be promoted here in this district. You can't walk through a high school without having that shoved in your face, seeing signs of this lifestyle. You know, Mesa used to be a community, a generational community, with the lifestyle of an intact nuclear family and lots of kids. Where is that being promoted? If you're telling us that low birth rate is negatively impacting this, and you're not promoting that, but you're promoting the other lifestyle, you're doing a terrible job. And you're doing that because you don't have courage. You know, not only the teachers and the staff are promoting that, but the teachers' union promotes that. And the other thing the teachers' union promotes is abortion. 12,000 children lost their lives in Arizona last year, and the year before that, more than 12,000, and the year before that. Those numbers add up. How many of those lost lives would have been community members here in Mesa and enrollees in this district? And then the teachers' union turns around and promotes Prop 139 as if 15 weeks for abortion wasn't enough? We want it all the way up to birth? And this is an organization you allow to have a voice and a seat at the table in making decisions, important decisions, in this district. And they're proving themselves not to be aligned with the needs and the mission of this district. You guys really need to rethink what's going on here. And Dr. Strom, you know, I'm glad you're coming on. I wish you the best.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Forless, members of the superintendency. My name is Casey Baxter. I have the honor of being the principal at Franklin Accelerated Academy East Campus. And you guys have heard me say it, but I'm on a mission to find good, because I believe if you look for it, you will find it. So I continue to look. And tonight, I am here because I am super excited about tomorrow night, actually. Tomorrow night is our first school choice fair. And I've heard it in this meeting lots of times about what are we doing to attract and retain our families? So I'm really excited that we are providing a one-stop shop tomorrow. Now, I would give a miss if I didn't mention that my colleagues and I have been discussing this, and it is not a case of one-upmanship. But we are all chatting about who's going to have what, what will be at your booth, what kind of literature are you sharing, how will you sell your program, what are you going to do, will my booth be bigger? So I want you to know, my group will be there at 3 o'clock. We'll be setting up. We'll be ready for 5:30. Come on over, visit Franklin. We'll all be together. We hope you do stop by. I wanted a big shout out to Nina Allred, our marketing supervisor, I think is her title. She has been tenacious with this, and she has been communicative, and recruiting, and cheerleading us, and advocating left and right for all of us to participate. So I do hope you'll stop by. I invite all of Mesa Public Schools, all of you come on over and check it out. It'll be our first one, and it's a great opportunity. So thank you for pushing us, encouraging us, and supporting us. And I can't wait for tomorrow. Not that our booth will be the best, but it probably will. Come over.
Thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jeff Thompson. I'm a conservative homeowner. I've been coming to these board meetings for the last couple of years, and I'm hoping that our new president is as radical and off the rails as our last one. I hope she ran on being conservative or Republican. She was appointed because she was, but she was a rubber stamp for the previous president. And if you want to get nuggets of information, get nuggets of information from the people that left the school because of your policies. And Sharon, maybe you'd have got a position on the board if you weren't a part of the squad. I mean, as things turn political, big time. I'm going to back up. When I went to school, we had a shop teacher smoke cigars. What do you think happened? The smoking lot to buy cigars was 14. Dozens of kids started smoking cigars. What the hell do you guys think when these kids see all this gay flags, rainbows shoved down their throat? Oh, I want that lifestyle. You guys need to stop promoting sex in the school, and also the political stuff. You need to get it out of the school. And I hope our new superintendency, I've got an email from him from 2023 of what policies were put in place the year before to bring the proficiency rate up. I've got it. If anybody wants to look at it, I'll share it with you. You probably got it in your archives. What the hell's happened? None of the proficiency rate's been brought up. And I don't know, I call you guys the last two people. I call it the Deadpool. You guys promote people that are nonperformers. And I hope this person here, I hope they get him out of here, because maybe they want a proficiency rate 30% less than what you have here, because that's what he's been a part of. I don't know, you guys are too damn disgusting.
Hi, my name's Bernard Arthur, MPS student, or not student, I used to be a student and a parent. At our last meeting, and apparently now, we have had concerns of low birth rates. And as a concerned parent myself, and you know, apparently they decided that they wanted to bring this up. I have an answer to why we have low birth rates. The real drivers behind low birth rates include stagnant wages that fail to keep up with the rising cost of living, an unsustainable housing market, crippling student loan debt, and price gouging at our grocery stores. These economic burdens make it hard for younger people to want to make and have families. If we address these issues and focus on those issues, then we can, as a community, can be better. Our time is better served not attacking our LGBTQ community. They have been a part of our community since time immemorial, and to suggest that low birth rates can be just simply remedied by traditional marriages, not only misguided, but uninformed. If we really truly want to create a better community, let's focus on our legislation, let's focus on supporting our teachers, and let's just focus on supporting our students. Thank you guys for your time. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Before you start my time, Madam President, is this an appropriate time to speak on an action item? That's what I signed up for. Okay, all right. So the action item I'm speaking on is the $250,000 for sole source, or secured mobility for SmartTag. Okay? And let me just preface what I'm about to say with this. If any one of us went in here to buy a new $80,000 SUV, we took it for a test drive, we wanted to buy it, but we found out the AC didn't work. There's not a person in here that would drive off the lot with it partially working. We would make them fix it before we bought it, right? And that is my problem with this. Since August, I have been receiving emails that this SmartTag app, for our phone, that the parents can download so that we can see what the district sees. We can see where our child got on the bus when they scanned their ID. We can see where they got off. And since then, it has not come up. I have talked to Scott on this on numerous occasions. I'm asking the board to table the decision on that. Until you guys get these people to fix the entire system, it is not fully functional. Putting $250,000 aside for a program that is not fully functional is unacceptable. Nobody in here would buy something that partially works. We need to get that resolved. I would suggest that Scott, go to these people and say, hey, send your people in at no cost to our transportation department and get this resolved so that the parents have access to the app. I have the app. I checked it again today. No matter what you do, I've set it up in August, and we are now in February. We're coming up. I mean, that's ridiculous. And I even joked about, last time we had a parent group meeting, and Scott was on the call, I even joked about it and said, is this going to be ready for graduation by next year, by the time my son graduates? So I would recommend that the board not approve that action item for that $250,000 until they get the issue resolved. Thank you. God bless. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on to the next part of our agenda, we will now review the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are approved with one vote with no discussion. If a board member would like to pull a consent agenda item, please do so now. Seeing none, thank you. We will move down to our personnel request. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel request, including the addendum?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the personnel request, including the, including the addendum. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote? With a vote of five ayes, we have approved the personnel request, including the addendum. With this approval of personnel request, Mr. Wieng, can you share some changes with us that we will see?
President Davis, governing board, superintendency audience, as you're aware, it's kind of been mentioned already, Mesa Public Schools is declining enrollment, like other school districts, and we're declining in revenue. And as a result, we need to consider all staffing decisions, and that includes superintendency. Tonight, with your approval, you will notice that Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource position is going to be revised to an executive director level, which is a non-supervisory level, and at a lower pay grade. And we'll begin the hiring of that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wieng. Dr. Strom?
President Davis, I just want to emphasize, one of the things that was tasked of me in the interview process was to come in and help the district move forward with in re-envisioning our mid-level management and superintendency positions. This is the first step of many, and I look forward to moving Mesa Public Schools in the direction of an executive director model in the long run as we move into the next three years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Strom. Moving into our consent agenda, all items listed will be considered as a group and will be approved with one motion. If a board member would like to spotlight or comment on a consent agenda item, please do so after the vote. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote? With a vote of five ayes, we have approved the consent agenda items according to the recommended action for each item. We will now move on.
Madam President, this is Rachel Walden. Are my votes not coming through? Because you said, did you say four one?
Five. I think it came. It was unanimous. It's coming through.
Okay, okay.
You're good. They're coming through.
I thought you said four one and not five one. Sorry about that.
No, you're good. Thank you for checking. We're glad you're there.
Thank you.
All right, we now move into our policies. Tonight, we have eight policies updated on the agenda for a first read. We had an executive session earlier this afternoon for legal advice from legal counsel on these policy updates. Now is the time for the board to have a discussion with each other on these updates. Would any board member like to start a discussion on a policy? And then please state which policy you would like to discuss, and we'll complete. And then please state which policy you would like to discuss, and we'll complete all discussion on each policy before we move to another policy. Yes.
I would like to address policy 4-202, Staff-Student Boundaries. I've, I've been in contact with a number of employees and the change on 10C, which allows for an additional exception for nursing health services staff when privacy or confidentiality is essential for student dignity and well-being. As, as you and I remember, and Mrs. Walden as well, we spent a lot of time on this policy because of the very important nature of it, particularly when it comes to staff and student protection, as well as safety, and making sure that we're providing services. At this time, I would like to talk about some best practices. It has been, it has come to my attention, and certainly we, we knew this when we adopted the policy, that there would be some exceptions. But the exceptions are not included in 10C. We have, we have staff, for example, resource teachers that provide instruction. We have health staff that administer medication. We have administrators that meet with students, maybe for a behavioral issue or a private issue, a confidential issue. Security personnel responds to student issues. One-on-one aides assist students, maybe perhaps in a tutoring responsibility. Students may be in an alternative learning center or in detention with an adult. We, we talked about how do we best protect students and staff? How do we provide essential services? And there was suggestions that, you know, doors could be left open or there would be windows in the room. I got to tell you, I was at Mountain View High School on Tuesday for most of the day, and I tried to go from room to room to room. And guess what? The doors are locked, as they're supposed to be! We, we, for security and safety reasons, our classroom doors are locked. So to have doors open is really kind of unrealistic. And yet, we know that our personnel provide essential services to kids, but we got to protect students and we got to protect staff. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask that perhaps we take a look at the policy in its current realities and, and maybe not keep coming up with exceptions, but maybe do a rewrite of this part of the policy. And I would suggest that, since I'm getting many suggestions on, on ways in which we can solve this issue, that we, that we meet with employees, that we include employees, both certified and classified, in the development of perhaps a revised policy, and that we, we take a look at maybe a team approach to crisis intervention, that we, maybe we take a look at training our staff better, but instead of coming up with exception after exception, which would weaken the policy, I believe, that we take a look at the policy and strengthen it by revising it.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Anyone else?
I agree with Board Member Hutchinson that when we see the things that we've implemented, if they're not working and we're constantly having to create exceptions, we need to go back to the drawing board and, and look at different options that, that meet the needs of our current realities.
Thank you.
So if I hear you, you'd, this would be postponed, this one would be pulled from the second read next time, so that we can get some input. Because I agree with Member Hutchinson, the more exceptions you create to a policy, the weaker the policy becomes. We can't possibly consider every single exception that may exist. So if we have broad best practices put in place that support and protect both our staff and students, that's, to me, essential. So I would, I, I would not be opposed to doing that.
Thank you. I think, Mrs. Walden, did you have any comments on this policy?
No, thank you for checking with me.
Thank you. I think we're in agreeance on this, that we would love to see this go back and have some input from our classified and certified staff to make sure that we are, making sure we're safe in all areas.
And I'd like to thank them for bringing this to our attention.
Agreed. We appreciate getting input, so we know we're not, we're not living the day-to-day that many are, so we appreciate the input that we receive, so thank you. Any other discussion on other policies? Mrs. Walden, did you have any comments on any other policy?
Just, if, you know, people are looking at the agenda, the 3-110 and demarcation, that, that policy is covered by other policies, so that's the explanation for the red line of that whole policy.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing that, yes.
Madam President, I do actually have a quick question as well, or possible discussion on 4-201. So this is our employee code of conduct, and if you go down to item number 23, it says, "Dress according to professionally accepted standards and as directed." I've been on numerous different campuses in the time that I worked at Mesa, and there doesn't seem to be a consistent, a consistent policy or consistent profession, what would be considered professionally accepted standards. So is that something perhaps that we want to at least look at what minimum things would be acceptable standards of, for our professionals to wear? Because it, it does vary significantly by location.
I think I'd like to get some information from superintendency, maybe, and from principals as to why there is that variation. I've noticed it as well. And, and maybe if there's a, an accepted definition of professional dress and what that, and what that would be, perhaps for the second read, is that, would that be good for you? Okay.
Yeah, that would be great, just because I do think that we, this leaves it very ambiguous, what is a professionally accepted standard within Mesa? And I know that there's a difference between, as any teacher will tell you, like, what is appropriate for a PE teacher to wear is different than it is for, you know, a high school math teacher. A kindergarten teacher, that's different than a high school chemistry teacher, or whatever. But there should be a baseline. If we, as educators, want to be treated as professionals, we should have a, a baseline acceptability of, of dress. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on any other policies? Okay. All right. We are going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve a contract award for $250,000 for continued purchase of subscription fees, maintenance, updates, and supplies for Smart Tag?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Thompson, will you tell us more about this item?
Happy to, Madam President. So I, the, the motion in front of you is Smart Tag, that's the parent company's source secured mobility. The, we had planned to roll out the parent app this fall, and it has been delayed. And, and I would share with you that that's really, in my mind, more of a reflection of our priorities. We have a continuing shortness of drivers, and you have to understand that what that means is that the majority, and I mean, like, 98% of the staff, including our mechanics, are off and out driving buses, which delays their ability to do their given job. And that might be routing, that might be dispatching, that might be mechanic work. And so I would say that our delay is probably more of a reflection of our capacity, not the company's. Smart Tag has been very responsive. They have sent out individuals at no cost to assist us with our conversion. The other piece to this is that our routing system we currently use is 35 years old. And when we started down this path of working with Smart Tag, we did not commit to their routing systems. We realized after we got into this that that was a mistake. We have now committed to using their routing system and we are converting over to that quickly. What all that means is we were concerned that we would not be providing accurate information in the parent app, and that was more of a concern than getting it out quickly, because inaccurate information could lead to students out at bus stops at the wrong time, or parents anticipating buses that were, were not going to show up because of the information challenges that we had. But again, this is not a reflection, this is a reflection of the different systems and legacy systems we have. And this vendor, I would say, you can ask our bus drivers, this is a product that was designed by bus drivers, and it's been very successful for them on the user side. The backend side of it is really on us as a school district to convert that information and make it successful. We are at a point where we are now ready. And so after spring break, we will be making the application available to all parents. What that means is they will receive notifications when their student loads onto the bus and gets off the bus. And, and then you can enable that on your phone, so you get a push notification if you want to kind of have it in real time. And so that information will be going out shortly. We will communicate that out through emails and texts and other communication methodologies so that parents are aware that the app is now available. It has not been active, and it will be active after spring break. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
So, Mr. Thompson, if I'm hearing you, the issues and concerns that Mr. Hamlet brought up are already in the works of being resolved?
Yes, we will.
And then I have another quick question for students that don't typically ride a bus, but let's say that they're on a bus for a field trip. Is this, does Soul Source provide access to information of kids loading on a bus for field trips as well as just day in, day out?
Yes. Any parent that downloads the app and has access to the system, we can provide them if they're on a, on a field trip or on a regular. But I will say that our emphasis right now is obviously on regular routes. Sometimes field trips can get challenging, and the only reason I bring that up is think about like, somebody with a lot of band uniform and a tuba and a, and a, having their ID and, so we're still working through those challenges, but...
So it is access through the student ID? They have to scan it?
Yeah, have to have your student ID, you have to scan it, and then that tells you, that's the information that goes up to tell us that you're on the bus.
I can see that being more for
Regular route.
Parents of elementary kids that don't have a tuba?
Understood, yep.
They would love to be able to know that their child's loaded on a bus or off a bus.
Yeah, it's just become an issue with some of the field trips, given that they might have costumes on, or, you know, so we're, we're still, somebody once said, a very intelligent person said, in Mesa, it takes about three years for us to get it all worked out because of our size, and so I think we're in, about to enter year two here, and we're working through a lot of those details. But yes, you have to have the ID, has to be scanned on the bus, that's the information that then gets transmitted to your app to tell you that your, your student entered or exited the bus.
May I ask one more question? Is the, is there, are we keeping data on the number of student IDs that are lost or having to be replaced at parent?
Yes, we're, we're working on...
Especially at an elementary level?
Yes, we understand. It's been a, a challenge in a, it's a change in culture, it's a change in behaviors, it's a change in a lot of things. So yes, this has been the first year, so it's a little hard to know that this is normal yet, but we are tracking, you know, how many students are losing, how many must be replaced, all that information.
Madam President, I just wanted to share my experience. So one of my five children is eligible to ride the bus, and he got on the bus in the morning and then didn't get off the bus in the afternoon at the regular time. And I was able to call the bus barn, and they were immediately able to look up that he hadn't gotten on the, gotten off the bus, he was on the bus, he just had gone to the next stop. And so it was really easy to connect with him, and I was really grateful for that, rather than having to like, follow along the bus and hope that he was there, not know if he was on the bus. It gave me a lot of peace of mind, so I had been very critical of the lanyards, and what a pain they had been for all of my other kids, but I had to eat my words a little bit on that day when I was able to find my fourth grader really easily and have that, that peace of mind. I would love to, to have those numbers on what this has cost in replacement, how many we've replaced. We have schools that don't have access to busing and just kind of look at those dynamics.
Madam President, Member Lacy, I would just say that, member Chaffee, I'm sorry. The information, I'd say, give us the year. I mean, it's just so incomplete right now, we're still collecting a lot of information, and it is the first year, but we, we do have some sense of, you know, what's going on, and we're trying to get a handle on best practices for, for everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on this? Appreciate the discussion. Mrs. Walden, sorry, I don't, I just want to make sure I'm not just skipping over you.
No problem. I actually just have a quick question. Do we have like a timeframe or a deadline that we're setting for ourselves to work out some of the, the kinks and the bugs in, in, in our systems before we determine how long we want to commit to it?
Madam President, Member Walden, excellent question. I would say that obviously kind of the first deadline is returning from spring break, the app will be available. The second piece I think you're asking is kind of like, when do we think we're going to have all the other pieces put in place? And really, we're working towards the next school year for, for the conversion of the routing process and, and some of those. So yes, we have timelines, and our timeline right now for full conversion of the system is beginning of next school year.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. I think we're ready to vote. Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote?
With a vote of five ayes, you have approved a contract award for $250,000 for continued purchase of subscription fees, maintenance, updates, and supplies for Smart Tag. Do I have a motion to approve a contract renewal of $7 million for the Return to Work Retiree Program, provides experienced staff an opportunity to phase in their retirement?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Ween, will you tell us more about this item?
Certainly. President Davis, governing board, superintendency audience, to begin with, this actually saves money for the school district, just wanted to point that out right away. But ESI is, is a, in a sense, a phased retirement program. This program is available in, I think, every district that I'm aware of in the state of Arizona. Sadly, I recall implementing it probably 20 years ago, a long, long time ago. The governing board approved a redesign of our ESI program three years ago, and really with the emphasis that it's an employee benefit, and it's also employee retention strategy for Mesa Public Schools. It allows employees under normal retirement, in essence, to be re-employed with Mesa Public Schools. We hire other retirees, whether it's law enforcement, military, educators from other states even, and so we wanted to honor even our internal employees who remain committed to us. It saves the district payroll expenses, excuse me, by allowing this program. I would estimate we, we save over a million dollars every year. It'll be dependent on how many participate each year, but it does save money nonetheless. I just recall Bus Driver Appreciation Week last year, seeing a table, and the whole table were, had bus drivers who participated in this program, sharing with me that if the board had not made changes, as the redesign was a couple of years ago, that they would have been seeking employment elsewhere. And we need bus drivers, not less of them, so that was just an example that I'm providing of how it was a retention strategy as well. So that was just an example that I'm providing of how it was a retention strategy as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wing. Any other discussion?
Uh, this is Rachel Walden. I have a question about, how long have we been offering these services? I know since when I was on the board, we, you know, voted for this, this is a renewal, but, uh, about how long has this been a practice?
Uh, three years ago, the governing board approved a redesign to it, but it's been in practice. Does anybody who's been here much, much longer than I, it's been a long time.
Wait, was look at the, uh, yeah.
Probably around the time I implemented it in a different district 20 years ago.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I will just say that I know that our teachers who do retire at a relatively young age love this option. And their communities love the option that they, uh, that teachers can come back without any kind of disruption. It used to be that they had to be gone for a year, right? And then, so, uh, teachers love this.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. I think we're ready to vote. Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote?
With a vote of five As, you have approved a contract renewal of $7 million for the Return to Work Retiree Program. Provides experienced staff an opportunity to phase in their retirement. Do I have a motion to approve the audits and compliance questionnaire?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Thompson, can you tell, please tell us more about this action item before we pass it over to Ms. Shields from Heinfield Meach for presentation?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, before you this evening, you know, really, for me, there's two really important times of the year where we bring information that's critical to the public and to you as board members. The first is when we bring the AFR, which really is in October and refers to our expenses and how we've spent the money, not how we plan to spend the money. So if you're really looking for a critical eye on what we're doing, that's the document to look at. The second is these documents this evening. So this evening, you're going to have a quick presentation from our audit firm and a little discussion around what the audit looked like. But obviously, this is the independent review and the transparency for, uh, the public on how we spend our money and how we take care of our finances.
Thank you. Ms. Shields needs a clicker.
Oh, we need the clicker. Jennifer, I'm going to let you introduce yourself because it's more impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Um, I'm Jennifer Shields. Um, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Forless, um, thank you for allowing me a few minutes of time um, this evening to go over the results of the audit report. Um, as you see on the screen, um, we are talking about the audit, um, from the year ended June 30th of '24. So we'll go through, there are certain things that, um, the external auditors are required to, um, you know, alert, um, what we call those charged with governance, so essentially the governing board. Um, so we'll go through a few of the required communications and then I'll give some highlights about the audit and the process. And we will see if I can get this started. Okay, there we go. Um, okay, so, um, audit timeline, um, as you can tell, so I was here actually last February, right about the time of this meeting presenting the results from the '23 audit. So we're essentially right on schedule, so that's good news. The audit timeline itself is actually very long. You can see from the screen there. Um, we started this audit essentially right after I did the presentation last year, um, when we issued the engagement letter. So that's kind of like the start of the process. We do perform procedures, um, on a number of different occasions. You can see from May through October, um, we're interacting with various district staff members, um, performing various audit procedures depending upon the time of year. So we do actually start, um, our fieldwork procedures prior to the end of the school year. And then a lot of the really heavy, um, audit, like number-related focus of those types of things happens after the conclusion of the fiscal year and as Mr. Thompson stated, um, after you guys all approve the AFR, which that occurs in the October timeframe. So, um, there's a lot of work that goes into this, both on, um, you know, our side as the external auditors, but also, um, you know, from all of your staff here at the district. And then we also, um, assist management with preparing the actual drafts of the reports that you have before you this evening. And we prepare the reports and then we send the drafts. It takes us usually a couple of months from the time we're here on site to be able to finish up the audit procedures and get everything put together in the format that's before you this evening. And then the audit report, um, the financial statements were issued in, um, December of 2024, which I'll kind of jump a little bit ahead, which, um, the deadline for your audit to be finished, um, there's a couple of different deadlines. But one of the deadlines for, um, being able to submit your financial statements for excellence in financial reporting, um, awards, that, that deadline is December 31st. So we, um, in conjunction with, um, the district, we're able to make sure that the district met that deadline. In terms of the scope of the audit services that we provide, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Also with government auditing standards, as a governmental entity, you're subject to those standards as well. And then last but not least, the standards that are required by Uniform Guidance. And so the Uniform Guidance piece of it is related to all of the federal awards that the district receives and then expends. We're also contracted to perform a, um, uh, what's called the Uniform System of Financial Records, um, USFR Compliance Questionnaire. So you have, um, those documents all in your packet, um, that we'll talk a little bit about. So in terms of my responsibilities as they relate to, um, performance of audit procedures, like I said, we go through our audit standards, we follow all of those. Fraud is always something that we talk about as part of our audit. Um, so I'd like to talk about that with, um, the board. Basically, our responsibility with, um, respect to fraud communications is to make inquiries of board members. I know I've spoken to a few of you over the years, um, with respect to the different programs, um, in place here at the district. We talked to various members of, um, staff, not just in the finance and accounting offices, but throughout the district, just to kind of, you know, ultimately figure out if there's any, um, sort of red flag areas that need to be addressed. Um, ultimately, the responsibility for fraud prevention rests with you all. Um, so we, we do point that out. Um, so as you can see, I, I design my audit procedures and my team performs the audit procedures so that we are able to provide reasonable but not absolute assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented. Um, in terms of accounting standards, there are always, it seems like new accounting standards that we have to implement. This year, there was something we call GASB Statement 100. It was somewhat of a minor standard. Um, the year before was something much more major. You guys did something earlier this evening regarding subscriptions and that was a, a much larger lift for the district last year. This year, um, in this audit, um, there, and why I bring this up tonight is because there is, um, a new standard that requires a little bit different change in presentation. So if you're like me and you're looking at the financial statements, you'll see that there's some, some different presentation for, um, changes in reporting units of the financial statements. And so the reason why the format may look a little bit different, um, this year from prior years is, um, because of the implementation, implementation of this particular accounting standard. So no concerns with that implementation. Um, in any financial statement audit, there are significant estimates that are, um, involved. Management has to essentially make certain estimates, um, to be able to get the financial statements out in a timely fashion. You can see the three bullets on the screen there. Um, those three items are the most significant estimates in the financial statements. Management makes estimates related to assets, so how long we utilize our assets for. The assets are depreciated over those estimated useful lives. Um, the estimate of insurance claims, so the district is self-insured for, um, various different claims for employee health, wellness, um, property liability, that kind of thing. And so along with any self-insurance plan, estimates have to be made with respect to how much do we need to keep in reserves? What do we think has been incurred, but that we don't know about yet as a financial statement date? And then, um, last but not least, the district participates in the state retirement system for the, um, for, for all of your, um, employees. And the state retirement system has a lot of actuarial valuations and those estimates and the assumptions with respect to the state retirement system end up as a part of your financial statements as well. So, it's a little, it's a little game over here if I can get the clicker to work. Um, we're also required to, um, let you know whether or not there are any audit adjustments that we're required to report. So audit adjustments are things that we find that may be wrong, that need to be corrected in order for the financial statements to be properly prepared. We did not have any audit adjustments that we need to let you guys know about. There may be sometimes little coding things that get, get noted, but nothing that rises to the level of concern on the audit itself. There are also non-audit services that are provided by Heinfield Meach. So, um, as I mentioned, we assist the district with the preparation of these actual reports. And so that's considered a non-audit service. So what we do is we, we do take the district's, um, accounting records and we will, um, gather information from the district as well as other outside sources in order to propose adjustments that will put the financial statements in, um, in a, the format that's required by generally accepted accounting principles. So we prepare all of that information and provide that information to management. And then management reviews the information, accepts responsibility for that and kind of agrees with what we've done. Um, or if they don't agree, then we work through any changes that may need to be made. And then I mentioned the Uniform Guidance, um, report earlier, that is related to the federal audit. And so we assist with the preparation of what's called the SIF, or the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, and also the data collection form that's required to be submitted to the federal government, um, that recaps all of the spending that was, um, made by the district during the year with the federal programs. In terms of other required communications, I'm really happy to report that we had no disagreements with management over financial accounting or reporting or other matters. So thank you for always working with us on that. Um, at the end of the audit, management provides, um, a list of representations basically saying that as the auditors, we asked them for a lot of, a lot of information and they provided us all of the information. And then, of course, as your external auditors, we are required to maintain our independence in order to be able to issue the independent auditor's report. And we had, um, no violations with independence or other ethical requirements on our end. Um, so then, there are, um, there are three different reports that we issued and also a letter. The letter is actually a recap of everything I just went over. Um, but the three reports that, um, we issued, I'll go over them quickly. Um, the first one is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I've taken the liberty of listing out some various page numbers that if you wish to peruse, um, you know, that might be some, the page numbers where you want to focus on. Um, I'd like to point out on page, um, by the way, these are PDF page numbers. I apologize, not print page numbers, so it depends on which version you're looking at. Um, but, um, page 20 of the PDF version is the Independent Auditor's Report. So that's what I'm responsible for and I'm happy to report that the district received an unmodified opinion. The, um, management's discussion and analysis, I'd also draw your attention to because that's kind of where management gets to write the story about the numbers, um, why things changed, why things went up or went down. And it should, um, if you read it, it'll probably reflect a lot of the information that Mr. Thompson presents to you throughout the year about the various changes. And as you guys look at your budgets and where your actuals are, and you should be able to correlate that to already known information. Um, switching gears to the Single Audit Report, so this is that Uniform Guidance Report that we talked about. Um, again, PDF page 10, which in the print version, it's actually the last page of that report. It's a much smaller report. Um, that is what's called your Single Audit Report. And that, um, on page 10, there is a summary schedule of findings and question costs. It's a summary of auditor's results and it kind of recaps all of the information with respect to the audit. So during the audit of the financial statements, we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control that were noted. And then it switches into the federal awards. And I peeked at it, I think the district spent about $142 million in federal awards. A very large portion of that was the closeout of the ESSR funds, so that's where a lot of that money was expended. Um, and that's why we looked at that as what we call our major federal program. So we audited, um, essentially, it's called the Education Stabilization Fund, but you all know it as ESSR. So ESSR, um, alone in this particular audit year was, um, it was 44% of your total federal program expense. And just for those, um, maybe listening, the, um, other types of federal programs that you get, those are where you see like your Title I or your National School Lunch or your IDEA type. Special education is what like IDEA, special education cluster is what the federal government calls it. So those are some of the other very large programs that you off, um, offer here. Um, but ESSR, of course, was still the large, um, largest, um, bucket this, this year. Um, switching gears to the very last document that we have, the Uniform System of Financial Records, um, Compliance Questionnaire. So that document is put out by the Auditor General's Office for the state of Arizona. And it's got, you know, 30-ish pages of 18 different content areas. And as your external auditors, we go through and we have to design tests that will answer those questions either yes or no. And they cover a whole gamut of different, um, different areas. We look at, you know, governing board meetings and make sure that you're properly posting and, you know, providing notice and taking minutes and making those minutes available to the public. So we look at things like that and we look at things, it's National Procurement Month next month. So we look at your procurement extensively in accordance with, um, the school district procurement rules that you're required to follow. Um, and then just a whole host of other things. I list student attendance up there because we spend an inordinate amount of time tracking, um, you know, testing that you all at all of your school sites are, um, you know, marking kids as being present or you're enrolling them properly or withdrawing them properly when they move on to another, um, school system. So this is the, the area where we end up getting very far out of, um, the finance office. You know, we, it covers transportation, records management, all sorts of different things. So it's, um, pretty comprehensive. And then this is the document that the, um, Auditor General's Office will use. Well, they'll use all three of them in conjunction, but especially the USFR Compliance Questionnaire. And they will ultimately make a determination on whether the district was in substantial compliance with the requirements that are imposed upon you. And so that, um, final comments, um, just want to thank, uh, Mr. Thompson, of course, and everybody under your area, as well as, um, Ken Alexander. And, you know, we, they're the two main people that we interface with, but there are a lot of other people that, um, really help the district, um, get all of the information. It's quite, um, quite a heavy lift to gather all the information that we need in order to perform the audit procedures. And then just as, uh, looking forward to next year, I mentioned we implemented a new accounting standard. The district will also be implementing another new accounting standard for the next audit, which is called Compensated Absences. And so I know I talked to Mr. Alexander a little bit ago and he's already, it's already on his radar to start looking into that. But for you all, what compensated absences are, is, um, sort of like your vested vacation, sick leave, um, all of those types of things. So that concludes my presentation and I am happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Ms. Shields, for your presentation and we're grateful for all those, uh, our staff and your staff and for all of the hours that go into preparing this document. I know it doesn't happen overnight or in a month, lots of months, so thank you for that. Um, just a couple of questions I have really quick. With looking at the district, not have, uh, going through this, there's very few findings that you have found. What does that mean for a district our size?
Thank you, Madam President. That's actually a great question. Um, most of board members will ask, you know, kind of how do we rate compared to other school districts? So we do tend to pull some stats together just, um, so that we can provide some, some reference. Um, in that Uniform System of Financial Records Compliance Questionnaire, there are approximately 400 questions embedded within that document. And so on average, there are usually anywhere from about maybe 15 to 17 noes is kind of what we see as the, it's probably the average as well as the median. Um, and so, um, for a district your size, what, um, having a lot of yes answers means is that, um, your staff are really committed to training and educating. Because remember, this document, it, it, it's touching, you know, it, the, it's all the staff out at the school sites. It's all the 10,000 employees at the district that have a responsibility. So I know that the district puts a lot of effort on training and making sure that everybody understands the rules. understands the rules and then double checking the rules. So to have very few no answers is a positive thing.
Thank you. And just one more. Is there, from your perspective, is there anything more the district can do to address the issue of fiscal transparency?
Madam President, that's a stumper. So I think, I think one of the things that, and this is, I'm here because the legislature a couple of years ago started, they implemented a statute that requires you all to do a roll call vote. And so I think by having presentations by the external auditors, that helps. I think by asking questions and providing information to the public, there's a host of information that's available on your website that the public can access. But certainly having audit, you know, audit results posted and having interaction and dialogue with your external auditors as well as with management on a routine basis, I think is important.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam President, I just want to highlight that the last five years of these reports are available on the district website under Audit Services. So not only this year, but which hasn't been posted yet, but will be after tonight, the past five years are up there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any board members, do you have any questions?
Madam President, I just want to compliment both you as our firm, as our auditing firm and our, and our financial staff. I went through and I kept scrolling and I kept scrolling, all those questions, all those, I didn't realize there were 400 of them, but it felt like it when I was scrolling. And all the yeses and whether it's cash and revenue, accounting records, supplies, inventory, property control, procurement, payroll, student attendance. I mean, there was like one small thing in student attendance and there was one person who didn't sign a conflict of interest form, one person who didn't fill out the one form on P cards. That was it. And I'm like, we're a huge organization. And to see so many yeses, I think just was complete support for, that you saw a known need for audit adjustment, that you saw of the required letters, that compliance is ensured, that the staff was cooperative and helpful. I mean, because as I kept scrolling, I'm like going, yes, this affirms your report. And so I appreciate being able to actually look through and see all the various questions. And I just want to make everyone know that for 38 years consecutively, this district has been noted for excellence by the Association of School Board, excuse me, School Business Officials and the Government Finance Officers Association, 38 years. And this report is going to hopefully get us number 39. It's excellence and I can't thank you enough for all of the work that you've done to make sure that our public knows that this is transparency and this is good governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any other discussion? Mrs. Walden?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I appreciate the questions that you asked.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again for your presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you for the discussion. I think we're ready to vote. Since we use electronic voting, which includes each board member's name with their vote, that satisfies the roll call vote requirements. Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote?
Thank you very much.
With a vote of five VAs, you have approved the audits and compliance questionnaire. This moves us into our discussion items for tonight. Our first presentation tonight is on early childhood programming in Mesa. Ms. Baca, can you please introduce your team tonight?
Good evening, Madam President, members of superintendency. So today we have our Director of Early Childhood, Lisa Grodding, and her department specialist, Megan Anderson, here to share information about our program. Oh, sorry, the clicker's new to me. Okay. This is the agenda that we have for this evening. So some may ask, why invest in early childhood? Investing in early childhood closes the achievement gap for children from disadvantaged backgrounds, giving them the skills and tools that they need to success, need to succeed in kindergarten and beyond. There are long-term economic benefits such as higher earnings, lower crime rates, and a stronger workforce. Quality early learning sets children up for lifelong academic and personal success. There is a strong correlation between high-quality early learning and third-grade reading proficiency. Children attending preschool have stronger early literacy skills and higher reading achievement scores in elementary school and quality preschools can help reduce the risk of misidentifying English language learners for special education. Simply, early childhood is the best investment that you can make in education. We have many options in Mesa for families. We have 90 total preschool classrooms. We have 78 AM/PM half-day inclusion classrooms. We have four full-day preschool classrooms on high school campuses. We have two STEM full-day STEM enrichment classrooms at Red Mountain Ranch in Zahara and six Montessori preschools. All of our preschools serve children who are three, four, and five years old. In our 78 half-day sessions, these classrooms are inclusion classrooms and they serve 17 students, 10 students who are typically developing pairs and seven students with disabilities. In all of our classrooms, in all of our classrooms, we have a focus on early literacy, math, science, and social skills. This slide highlights our enrollment beginning in '21, '22 to the current year. In '22, '23, I began as the Early Learning Director and we ended the year with a little over 2,000 students. When I started, we had many self-contained classrooms and we started to put typically developed, place typically developing pairs into some of these classrooms. By '23, '24, we had reached full inclusion across all programs and, across all programs. And we did this without adding any FTE. So by '24, '25, here we are, 2,700 students as of '12, '26. In Arizona, districts are mandated to serve students in special education in their preschools. So we can't have a waitlist, we can't turn them down, we have to place them right away. So we have ongoing enrollment. So my prediction is that that 2,700 will surpass the 2,783 by May. This is typically where we start to hit our highest enrollment in February and March and ending in May. Mesa preschool students receiving ECSE services as inclusive classrooms is 96% as compared to the Arizona State average of inclusive settings, which is 40.3%. This data came straight from the Arizona Department of Education and I must say, they're very happy with our data. Let's see. So as I said, we have many inclusive classrooms and we have 76 of them located at 37 Title I elementary schools. Our Title I estimated allocation for preschools is 6,636,000 for the '25, '26 school year. Located on this slide, you will see all of the school, all of the Title I, 37 Title I schools. And next to it is a number, which is how many classrooms we have at each site. We also have tuition-based sites. Currently at Zahara's Elementary, we have a STEM enrichment preschool classroom. And in '25, '26, we are transitioning this classroom to an AM/PM inclusion classroom. We currently have a one-STEM, at K8 STEM Academy at Red Mountain Ranch Elementary, we have one STEM enrichment preschool classroom and one AM/PM preschool inclusion classroom. In '25, '26, we will be transitioning to just one AM/PM inclusion classroom. Hermosa Vista Elementary hosts a AM/PM inclusion classroom and we have four full-day preschools located at Mesa, Dobson, Skyline, and Red Mountain High School. We also have the Montessori preschools located at Serine, Montessori Center, and Bush Elementary. Our four full-day preschool classrooms, the four full-day preschool classrooms located at the high school campuses offer full-day preschool to the community and the school district employees. Our classroom, our class sizes range from 18 to 22 students. We offer the full-day preschool to our employees who receive a discounted rate based on a sliding scale fee. Our preschools are taught by certified teachers and also support our future educational CTE students in providing a learning lab to complement their studies. All of our preschool, all of our curriculum or preschool classrooms have a core curriculum, which is creative curriculum. We also have supplemental curricula that aligns with our early learning grades. So we have sound sensible, which is our early literacy curricula, touch math, supporting early learning math concepts, picture perfect science, which is being implemented in our STEM enrichment programs. And then we also have a state assessment tool, which is teaching strategies gold for students to track the progress for students with disabilities. Then this data is what is provided to the Office of Special Education Programs and the Arizona Department of Education. Next, I want to talk about Serine Montessori Center, which houses, and Bush Elementary, which houses our six Montessori preschools. But first, I'd like to introduce Hattie Harris. She's the coach of Serine Montessori to give you a preview of the Montessori preschools and their curriculum.
So in a Montessori classroom, we have a three-year cycle. That means that the preschool child is in the same classroom from the ages through, from three to six. So they go from preschool through kindergarten. This is, this helps with the high retention rates and the students continuing to enroll throughout the coursework on the campus. We have in our academics, both social and academic curriculum, working through the practical life skills of the preschool child, learning how to use their body, learning how to function and communicate, and well as the academics through math, language, sensorial, and other outdoor experiences. We have high communication rates with our families. We allow tours, we have volunteers, we provide many opportunities for parents and families to be involved on our campus. Historically, our preschool to kindergarten retention has been strong due to the program's structure of that three-year work, three-year cycle. If we notice trends of families leaving early, we gather that feedback and helps us address these concerns and reinforcing the long-term benefits of staying with the primary cycle. We have, we've sent surveys out and our, we have 40 out of 40 preschoolers returning next year with 27 of these preschoolers returning as kindergarten students. This is 100% retention as of now. In '24, '25, we retained 93% of our preschoolers moving on to kindergarten. Three students left for personal reasons and or moving out of the location. Thank you.
Now that we, now that we have covered the variety of preschool programs in Mesa, I'd like to take a moment to highlight the strong partnerships that support our early learning efforts. We partner with the City of Mesa, Mesa Public Schools Foundation, Arizona State University, Bezos Academy, and Head Start. Arizona State University provides an ongoing professional learning for our staff in the areas of interdisciplinary teaming and push-in services. The next partnership that I would like to highlight, the next partnership that I would like to highlight is our partnership with the City of Mesa and Mesa Public Schools Foundation. We proudly support the Mesa K Ready Program, which provides parent educational workshops and engagement activities. These workshops help prepare children for kindergarten by equipping families with the tools and resources to support their child's learning and development at home. We have bimonthly sessions on Wednesdays and the requirement for these families are that they're, that they are in the zip codes of Lowell and Stevenson Elementary and that their children are enrolled in our preschools. We have also opened up this program for surrounding schools nearby Lowell and Stevenson. We hold our sessions bimonthly at Stevenson, Lowell, and at the Family Resource Center and the Mesa Public Library. We have many different topics. I'm not going to go through all of them, but just to mention a few of them, we, we offer, we have offered developmental milestones, introducing literacy into your home, strategies for decreasing challenging behaviors, and friendship skills. We have partnered with CompuDot to provide free laptops for families. We had about 25 or 30 families that came to this free giveaway of computers. There was a tutorial and every family received a flash drive that had math and literacy activities that they could work with their children at home. We, just recently, we provided a dental checkup that was provided by Dignity Health and First Things First, and we had about 25 families attend that as well. We have some really fun family engagement activities. I won't go through them all, but we have a really fun one coming up in May, which is going to be at Mesa High School where we're giving away bikes, tracks, and helmets. And there's like, there's a safety, bike safety training that will happen and they'll have a little race on the track. So just a fun activity for families. And I, here in the next few weeks, we have Family Day at the Zoo. Another partnership I would like to highlight is Bezos Academy. The Bezos Academy preschools will be located at Poston Junior High, Fremont Junior High, and O'Connor Elementary School. Bezos Academy preschools will operate, will offer full-day year-around preschool for 180 students and the academy will cover all of the expenses, so no charge to the families. And families earning up to 400% of the federal poverty level will be eligible for this program. Oops. I was trying to finish early. So Head Start is another key partner. And so we have, our key partners are Head Start and we work with Maricopa Head Start and Salt River Head Start. We have, we serve about 100 students for the, every year for about the last four years. And our, we have MPS itinerant staff who go in and work with the general education Head Start teachers to serve our children with disabilities. We offer many different professional learning activities for Head Start staff. And we also offer parent activities for the parents of the children at Head Start. The locations are, you can see are below the table and those are the locations for Maricopa Head Start that has sites and some of the sites are at our Mesa locations. Once again, finishing early. To summarize, to summarize, our Mesa preschools are laying a strong foundation for future success. Through inclusive practices and high-quality instruction, we are ensuring that all children, regardless of ability or background, are prepared for kindergarten and beyond. I want to leave you with, oops. Well, I don't know where it is, but there's a parent testimonial, somehow I think it must have got deleted. One more? Yes, I really am trying to leave early. Okay. So I want to leave you with a really strong parent testament and I'm not going to read it to you, but I hope that you will just take a moment to read it. This story is just one example of how high expectations, inclusion, and the right support can change a child's trajectory. It's a really strong... It's a really strong testament to the work that we do in our preschool classrooms every day. So I just want to thank members of the board, superintendency, and Superintendent Forless for your time and continued support of early childhood education.
Thank you so much.
Do you have questions for me?
Yes. Thank you so much for this presentation. Do we have any questions, Board?
Madam President, so we have a lot of partnerships with providing preschool for low-income families across the district, correct? Is it possible to be looking for partnerships to provide Montessori preschool for low income? That, I know that that does not currently exist. However, that programming is really, really beneficial, especially that three-year cycle, I do think is just fabulous for those kids and the philosophy. But I know that there is not currently any financial assistance for families that want to, that would like that as an option for their child. So are we going to be pursuing that in any way? Is that a possibility?
Are you talking about Montessori?
Yeah, Montessori preschool.
Yeah, Bezos Academy, though, would be providing, I mean, it's, you have to apply, but it is still a free, it's still a free preschool experience, and it's year-round, five days a week.
No, I'm saying, is there any thought to pursuing partnerships that would allow for financial, like through DES or any of the organizations that provide funding for our low-income families that can't afford preschool?
Well, no.
Having Montessori as an option?
Yeah. No, we have not, we have not explored that. But I think that that's something, as we are expanding in preschool, that we could certainly look at.
Well, I think it would be really beneficial. It is, the, the philosophy of education is just, it really is very beneficial for kids. It's very developmentally appropriate. They're not being pushed academically before they're ready to be pushed academically. So I, I mean, if we, I think there's a lot of families that, if that were, even if it's a tuition assistance type situation, because many families can't afford it, that would benefit from a Montessori foundation. So I would love to see us pursue that as a district. Dr. Forless?
Yeah, Madam President, and members of the board, and Board Member Benson, the Bezos Academy is, their curriculum is a Montessori-inspired curriculum, and so they are following much of the teachings and philosophy of Montessori. And they're very committed to having a holistic experience for students, and that is free, full-day, year-round preschool, three meals a day. And it will be partnering in three of the schools that Mrs. Grouding shared with us, Poston, Fremont, as well as O'Connor. And they will be opening in September. And their, their criteria is families that are at 400% of the poverty rate. So that means that some of our own employees will qualify because they cannot, they meet the financial requirement.
Well, and I think that, I think that's great, but I don't think that Bezos is going to have the three-year cycle like our Bush and our Serine Montessori campuses have, are they?
Could you explain to me your definition of the three-year cycle, so I make sure I answer your question correctly?
Can you, I know what the three-year cycle is, but I mean, there's-
Are you talking about the, the three-grade band level in Montessori? Okay.
Yeah, it's a three-year cycle typically, not only in preschool, but in their, I always get it wrong. It's lower L, right?
Right. So I'm not super familiar. I just know enough to be dangerous about Montessori. But there are three, the band, there's three-grade band levels. So it's pre, it's preschool, it's preschool, three, four, and five-year-olds, and kindergarten is sort of that first cohort. And then there's the next three-grade levels, and then the next three-grade levels. So I'm assuming that's what you're speaking to?
Yes, but I have a feeling I'm not being clear on my question. So I understand that Bezos, they may have a Montessori feel, but they're not going to have the three-year cycle that Bush and Serine have, correct?
It's strictly a preschool program. It's multi-age for children, three, four, and then, you know, some kids turn five by the end of, before they're able to go into kindergarten. So it will be multi-age.
So then what I'm, what I'm asking is, can we, can we, as a district, put in the idea that we should be looking at, are there ways we can help to financially assist families who would like the Montessori option but can't afford the $750 a month for preschool? So as a, we, we have lots of other tuition assistant program, assistance programs. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, I think Dr. Strom's ready to jump in.
Member Benson, we certainly would be willing to bring back to you a complete financial analysis of all preschool programming throughout the district, so that you can gain a perspective on exactly what revenues are coming in from preschool and expenses are going out. Upon, upon looking at that, you will quickly realize and understand exactly the preschool position we're in. And if that's something the board wants to explore, I also want to remind you that public schools in the state of Arizona are on limited discretionary funds. 90% of the funds that we get in the state of Arizona go out to employees, because we are people business. And so on the limited discretionary funds, Mesa Public Schools has got to live into the fact that we can only invest certain dollars in certain things, because there's not discretionary dollars to invest in everything we're doing. So we have programming that we invest in from a music perspective, let's say, and we have program that we invest in from a electives option at the high school level, let's say. And we have programming we invest in at the preschool level. Now, preschool education is near and dear to my heart, right? I write about it in my, in my dissertation, and we know that preschool education has a 13% ROI, year-over-year return on long-term span things from, from the perspective of student outcomes. You can read J.J. Heckman's work. He won a Nobel Prize for it. Heckman and Kuna, University of Chicago. Like, we can go down the route of understanding how important these investments are. So please don't hear me say that we don't value preschool education, but what we're going to have to do to work with the governing board in the future is we're going to have to bring a holistic view of all investments we make throughout the district, understand the revenues and expenses, and then make thoughtful decisions on where we're investing our dollars. Because what's going to happen in the future, three to five years, as we continue to deal with declining enrollment? And yes, we're going to work to attract students back into the Mesa Public School system. But as we're continuing to deal with declining enrollment and revenues being flat, we're going to have to make tough and thoughtful decisions across the board. So in short to your answer, we can explore all options, and what we'd love to do is explore options with our local municipalities, like has happened in others, in other municipalities. And they have been a great partner so far. But if, if there's options for us to work with our municipality to find preschool funding, like happened in Tempe, that's happened at Tempe Elementary School District, we're certainly open to any and every partnership to try to expand. But preschool education is an expensive venture. And, and so I know I went a little long-winded there, but we need to start to realize in Mesa Public Schools, there's only so much discretionary money, and you can't make investments in everything, and it's going to have to end up being, picking and choosing what we make investments in.
Madam President. And I totally appreciate that. I'm glad you mentioned outside entities. I'm not saying Mesa Public Schools funds and supplements. I'm saying, let's get some partnerships. I mean, if we have 100% or 93% retention rate from our, our Montessori preschoolers going on to kindergarten and then going into lower L, that's keeping our kids here, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say that I have two kids that have benefited directly from the district programming as special needs students. And it made for such a nice transition, having done preschool at the elementary school, to then feel confident and comfortable going to an elementary school. So I love that we are spending efforts, that we're being strategic, and that we're providing these services for students. And I think that maybe this idea of how are we going to prioritize things as a board would be a good thing to put on our upcoming retreat. Like, let's look at these things and kind of figure out what our priorities are.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation and for being here tonight. We are moving on to our next presentation. Dr. Gibbs. Floor is yours for progress monitoring toward, on student, ah, what's happening to my computer? College credits, it's all you.
Thank you, members of the board and superintendency. It's good to be with you tonight for a brief snapshot on college credit, student engagement and course-taking. So in this brief presentation, I'll be looking at MPS's students' engagement and MPS offerings that are designed to help them earn credit for college and reduce the time they spend in college and with that, the amount of money it costs to go to college. So at Mesa, there are three primary means of earning college credit. One is by exam, either through the AP or through International Baccalaureate Program that we currently have at Westwood, or through dual enrollment. And our dual enrollment programs are with Mesa Community College. And in those programs, our teachers at Mesa register as faculty members at Mesa Community College, and students who enroll in their classes may also then enroll at Mesa Community College to get credit for college for that course. So we begin looking at, by looking at student engagement. So this is how many students we have reached with these course offerings, how many individual students. So in this chart, we see the percent of students enrolled at the end of the year who have engaged in one or more of our college course offerings. So you can see the AP uptake has been fairly stable at 12%. And talking in a minute about that when we talk about the change that's happened at Westwood from AP to IB. But that has remained stable. If you take Westwood out, as you'll see in a moment, that has actually gone up slightly. And then we also offer International Baccalaureate. You see that there's been an increase at, in International Baccalaureate at Westwood, where that is offered, and a sharp increase at that, doubled in several years. And then we have a growing program with dual enrollment as well, increasing up to 28% of students having engaged in this program. Okay. So in this slide, we see the breakdown by school, and you can see that across all of our high schools, the numbers have been solid, in some cases, growing, when it comes to AP engagement. And the Westwood engagement has decreased down, you can see the numbers are very small. That is because they have replaced that AP with, those AP courses with IB courses. So that's not a decrease necessarily in the number of college credits taken, it's just a transition from depending at AP to moving toward IB. And I'll take a look at dual enrollment. You can see that in dual enrollment, has seen steady growth at some of our schools, especially at Dobson, significant increase in student engagement at Dobson, and steady enrollment elsewhere in the district as well. And so these slides do show kind of consistent engagement across these programs, with IB showing in the first program, in the first slide as well. So now we'll take a look at this same subject through the lens of, through the lens of Or course-taking refers to the number of AP, IB, or dual enrollment classes students have taken out of the total number of courses in their course load. So here we see about 3% of high school courses that our students take are AP. About 5% of the classes at Westwood are IB, and about 12% of our classes are dual enrollment. So around, putting, put together, around 15% of our classes, our students are taking, our classes in which students had the opportunity to, to earn college credit. This is up over the last few years. We'll take a look at AP by school and course-taking. Once again, these numbers reflect the, the trends you saw in the initial slide. And then we move on to, and with the decline at Westwood, as I said, that has been replaced by IB. And looking at dual enrollment by school, at Dobson High, you can see the proportion of students taking classes at Dobson High, the portion of their classes has regularly increased, as well as at Mountain View. So increases at Skyline and consistent across the others as well. So I hope this has been a brief, kind of snapshot into one of our pieces of, one of our key pieces of programming here at Mesa Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbs. Board, any questions?
Yes, Dr. Gibbs, I, I do have a question. Maybe it's, maybe for superintendency as well. Is there any hindrance, any obstacles for our students taking dual enrollment classes?
There are always obstacles for students in taking dual enrollment classes. I will tell you, one of them is the prerequisite skills needed. And so when you see the culmination of experiences that kids have in college-bound classes at the high school level, please know there's a lot of work that goes into that at the kindergarten through 10th grade levels. So that's one, right? Obstacles of prior knowledge. Second one, financial obstacles continue to be something that students need to have help overcoming in the district. There's been multiple attempts from the state legislature to get dual enrollment money to community colleges, so that they can support scholarships that are available. And Dr. Eastless's team has worked diligently with the community colleges, and maybe Dr. Eastless wants to comment a little bit on the financial obstacles we're trying to overcome here in Mesa Public Schools.
But my question was specifically dual enrollment. And that dual enrollment, enrollments, sorry, happens, happens to be going up. But I'm, but what I'm hearing is, is that it's, that it is difficult for teachers to get certified-
Absolutely.
-to be, I'm asking a dual enrollment question, not, not college-bound. So that there's, and, and there's some, some issues with the Mesa College Promise, and, and can that be applied at high school? Those are those issues that I'm, that I'm asking about, and, and, and is the district able to address them?
So I took it from a student perspective. Dr. Eastless will certainly be able to talk about the Higher Learning Commission, HLC, and their requirements on teachers getting certified.
Yeah, so they changed the requirements to the Higher Learning Credit requirements, I want to say, two or three years ago. And so that has made it more difficult for our, our high school teachers to become certified. And we have been working diligently with MCCD and ASU to figure out how we can best service our teachers, to get those higher-level credits that are required. But there just is not a lot of courses right now that are available, and we continue to work with them and their advisory boards as well, on figuring out how we can change the legislation around that and the requirements as well. But in terms of professional learning support and tuition and those kinds of things, we have set aside the FTSE money that we receive back from our community college and have worked diligently the last couple of years to strengthen those agreements, so that our schools can help support our teachers to take those college courses.
I was, I was thinking that probably the financial obligation to get those, that Higher Learning Credit-
Correct, yeah. That's one of our priorities.
-would be substantial for a teacher not to be able to do that, and that the district is supporting. That's, 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 that's key. Okay. What about the Mesa College Promise?
I know that I'm working with Selena Salinas from MCCD, MCC specifically, around some of those requirements. I'd have to go back and take a look specifically at what our needs here are at Mesa Public Schools, but I know there are, there are some barriers there, so I can bring back that information for you.
And I would certainly think that the MCC counselors that are on each high school campus help a lot.
For sure.
And that's why we've seen dual enrollment go up so high. Yep.
Ms. Hutchison, can I add one more thing? Please note that the HLC solution sets for Higher Learning Commission certification have resulted in ASU offering these universal learning courses. And that's another way for us to get around the certification process for our own internal teachers and have that certification lie on ASU professors as opposed to our own professors. And we do have high school principals, including Westwood, that are trying to embed universal learning courses into the learning experience through the academies. And so there's a whole nother option. And the kids actually in universal learning courses, through ASU, get to take the course for free, and then if they're successful at the end, get to pay for the credit. So we're exploring any and all opportunities with all universities and the community college areas to increase college access for kids.
May I ask one question, Madam President? So you, you said that Westwood in particular has moved from AP to enter baccalaureate. That just happened this year?
No, they've been in international baccalaureate for a while. The migration from AP has been ongoing.
So have they, has it just, has it been a continual movement away from offering AP courses to strictly having an IB? Because IB's been around at Westwood for a while.
Yeah, the, the biggest push is starting to happen right now. This year's been the biggest push towards that. And you, if you go over to Westwood and watch our academies, I had a great experience over there about a week and a half ago, watching these teachers function in a teaming fashion, and watching students across all levels of learning interact with a same, similar type of project at much different levels. Their learning targets and goals were just a little bit different. And it's created a culture at Westwood, Dr. Gilmore can speak better to this, but it's created a culture at Westwood where there's, there's not any longer necessarily the haves and the have-nots. It's much more a culture of, we're all in this, and we want students to try to test out IB, to see if they can be successful at a much more rigorous level. And we're very appreciative that that inclusive nature at Westwood is starting to thrive. But this year's been the major, this year's been- But this year's been the major, this year's been, he's been working on it for, since he's been there, but this year's been a major push at Westwood.
Madam President, I just have a follow-up question. Are IB classes at Westwood going to be open, are all IB classes at Westwood going to be open to all students?
The way I understand, Dr. Gilmore, and we, we had lunch yesterday to talk through a few of these concepts, what, what their desire is, is that if students want to have the experience of the rigor of an IB class, that in a class that they're taking, sophomore year, junior year, they'll be able to opt into the learning experiences needed and get that IB level of rigor in, in that teaming environment. So the, I think the goal would be eventually that for all students who want that learning experience at that level of rigor, it'll be available to them.
May I add to that? I met with a ninth-grade team last week, and that's precisely what they're attempting to do, is that all learners are, and I have a sample of ELA activity that's scaffoldled, so an IB, Gen Ed, inclusive. So I have another real quick question. On the statistics from, why are we, why are we doing ninth through 12th grade when I think AP, dual enrollment, and IB, that's only, well, now IB, you could have it at ninth grade, but isn't it only 10th and 11th, or 11th and 12th, sorry? Oh.
AP courses are available beginning in ninth grade.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the courses in this particular slide deck refer to the ones that would be college credit-bearing. So this would be, actually, if you looked at all IB classes, you'd see even larger numbers. Because this is only, this is focusing mainly on the ones for earning college credit.
Thank you. Just quick, and I don't know if anyone can answer this, do we know why the increase at Dobson's so high?
Paul, do you want to talk to the paper written by InvestEd? We have Kelly back there too. Mrs. Berg's back there too, but can you speak to a little on the ElevateEd slash HELEOS paper?
Yeah. A couple of years ago, the district partnered with an organization to strengthen our engagement with college, college-bound students, as, as our board member said today. And the, it wasn't just Mesa, it was also Phoenix, Phoenix Public, Phoenix Union. And in the first year, I think the first year of the program, or '21 to '22, there was a 20% increase, about 18% in just one year, in our engagement. And Phoenix Union had a, had a larger, had a larger increase, but we had a substantial increase in just one year, which has been attributed to that particular program's engagement.
And part of that engagement process was making just simple registration easier for kids. One of the choices back 20 years ago, when dual enrollment started around 1994 in the state of Arizona, and even as far back as 2000, one of the reasons you would choose to go with Rio Salado Community College as opposed to Chandler Gilbert Community College, as opposed to Mesa Community College, your choice as a system was often centered around how easy did they make registration for you and your kids? And so what this ElevateEd project with Phoenix Union and Mesa ended up doing is, particularly at Dobson High, to focus on how easy is registration? Now, they make the local school, MCCD makes the local school district go with the local community college, and so the process with MCC and the registration process has become infinitely easier through this ElevateEd and HELEOS work, just to get registered. That's one of the reasons for the increase.
Thank you. And I'll say, as a parent, even in the last, from six years ago, five years ago to now, it's, I've seen it, it's gotten a lot easier too. So thank you. Any other discussion?
I just had a quick question. The dual enrollment numbers, is this the number of students who enrolled in the classes or the number of students who earned the credit from dual enrollment?
This is the class enrollment here at Mesa, right? And the numbers of students who have enrolled at Mesa Community College has continued to go up too. Both of those numbers have gone up.
Do we have data on how many students actually earn credit from any of these three?
Yeah, this particular slide deck doesn't, doesn't address that.
Doesn't do that. We do have that data.
We do have the data, yeah.
Okay. And it's beneficial, I would hope.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you so much, Dr. Gibbs, and those that have helped with that presentation. Thank you for the conversation. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing that, Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote? How fast can we drive?
Yep.
With a vote of five ayes, the meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful spring break. We will see you then in March.